Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful unto Thee for all Thou does for us, and we're grateful to live here in this great valley, grateful for all that we have and able to do, and we pray for Thy Spirit to be here this night with us and help each of us and those who are there, that we can talk about the items on the agenda and be able to serve and meet the needs of our community. We're grateful again for all Thou does, and we say Saint Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if we've all had the opportunity, members of the planning commission, to look at the agenda, we'll take a motion to approve if you're ready.
Still moved.
A second. Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any conflicts of interest to declare from any members of the planning commission for anything on the agenda tonight? Haven't seen none. We can move on to our time of public comment. Alright, so, a little bit different tonight for all of us because we do have public hearings below and legislative public hearings. We still have an opportunity, okay, what that means in general terms is that if there's no public hearing scheduled, then we ask you to come and speak to anything on the agenda now, but we are going to have an opportunity at each point tonight, the way it's listed here. Just for the legislative?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I just, got it, copy. Oh, I saw the asterisk now, thank you. So, correction. So, for items number one through four on the agenda, so the Nettleton, Schlicky, and Wilkinson, those ones, we're not going to have an opportunity when we discuss those for you to come up and talk. So now is your opportunity to come up to talk to any of those. If you have any comments for the Nelson application, you'll have an opportunity specifically to come up and address that. That will be a public hearing for that because it's a legislative discussion. So now is your opportunity to come up if you want to talk about anything one through four or anything else.
You may want to mention that items one and two are being continued. We are requesting a continuance.
Okay, sure. No, that's a good time to do that. So, to Josh's point, items number one and two are going to be continued. We're not going to be discussing them tonight, so if you do have comments about those, you're welcome to say whatever you want, but I would recommend you come back when we have those on the agenda again. Both applicants have asked us to postpone that to the next meeting.
Not the next meeting, January 12th.
January 12th, okay. Oh yeah, there's one more in the beginning of January, so two meetings from now. Clear as monks? So, to recap, now is an opportunity for the public to come up and comment on anything except for item number five. So if you want to come up and talk now, now is your time. We just ask that you do come up. We have a microphone up here. If not, go on once. Okay.
I live on Park Travel. First, I want you all to know that I hate this. This is a neighbor-pitting neighbor-against-each-other thing that Kent and I do not like to take part in. We love and respect Dan and Stu Wilkinson and their families. They are the kind of neighbors that have made this county a place where most people want to live. I know if I needed help, I could call them and they'd help me, no questions asked. I'm sure after this, maybe this scenario has changed. It hasn't for us, and I hope it doesn't for them. Our daughter and three of our grandchildren live across the street from Kent and I right at the end of Harts Gravel Road. We're on property that has been in our family for seven generations. Our property borders the lower operating gravel pit. It borders both sides of the gated dirt road and the paved road. Our grandchildren cross that street daily. They spend a great deal of time on the dirt road. They come feed livestock down on our farm twice a day. They come shoot, they fish, they ride horses. They travel that dirt road on their motorcycles, bikes, snowmobiles, walking, farming. They get off the bus, they cross that dead-end road and come over and visit Kent and I, and we're truly blessed to have them there, and they have an amazing life. Though we love our Wilkinson neighbors, those babies and their safety is paramount and trumps any illegal or legal gravel pit businesses, Wilkinson's are running out of Harts Gravel. Kent and I raise quarter horses. We keep our foals in a pasture that again borders this dirt road and gravel pit. Wilkinson's have hauled out of an unpermitted gravel pit further up Harts Gravel Canyon for years. Kent and I have paid approximately $3,000 to keep the road brined to keep the dust down, ultimately trying to keep our foals from getting pneumonia from all the dust. I've spoke to Dan about it a few times, and I asked him the last time the road needed to be brined to do it. He didn't, but since then, some of the days, if it's dusty, they'll have Blake come run a water truck up there once or twice in the morning. When they keep it watered, it's a decent compromise for us even though they are running two illegal, unpermitted gravel pits. The next big concern is our spring, which is the source for our home. This Red Hill Spring has been in our family since early 1900s and is one of the oldest water rights held in Utah and again is our source of water, most importantly, our drinking water. This gravel pit is right next to this spring, and though we have it and don't want to pay for a survey, I believe part of this illegal gravel pit is on the easement for our spring. Loaders, trucks, and equipment can and do leak hydraulic fluids, antifreeze. They can crash or tip over spilling fuel, especially in these winter conditions that they've been hauling on. They're on a dirt road, they're on a steep incline. One of these spills could and will be detrimental to our source of water. Lastly, these illegal gravel pits aren't fair. It's not fair to Reese's, Granite, Geneva, Ordel Brothers, Meacham Brothers, et cetera, who are all put at an unfair economic disadvantage because they purchase and haul from pits that are legal. They haul from gravel pits that have done the work, they've paid the fees, they've done the EMTSAW work, they've gone through and made things right with the EPA. These legal gravel pits pay the liability insurance. They have taken the ground out of the green belt and paid the proper amount of commercial tax, and they've done the work and paid the fees to obtain a CUP with the county. Wilkinson's have commercially operated for years out of that canyon with none of that. I speak for a great deal of my neighbors. Most don't want to come here, and they don't want to voice their opinion, and they don't want to take part in this process because again, it pits neighbor against neighbor. So instead, you know who they call? Me, the girl who's willing to stick her neck on the line, and yes, I am, I will for the safety of all of our children, our citizens, our water, and the overall health and the prosperity of this county. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm Katie Peterson, and I live on Harts Gravel Road, and there are several issues that need to be mitigated in order to support the CUP for Dan Wilkinson. I think first and foremost, it needs to be clear which operation we're talking about under the CUP because there are two up there. The most recent is the excavation and sale of clay, and the other is the mining of the rock, which I know is happening because I have purchased said rock. I have multiple sizes of decorative rock in my yard as well as road base. This doesn't just come out of the mountain and just run across the spring. It is crushed. This is for-profit, commercial gravel pit going on up there. The other concerns or issues that need to be commitigated is, has there been an environmental study completed? Is there a fire management plan? Is there an air quality plan? Do they have SWIP permitting? Do they report to EMTSAW? Is there a hazardous spill mitigation plan? Have they submitted a restoration and resuing plan for said barn and farm? How much is expected to be excavated for said barn and farm, and what is the timeframe? How many acres does this affect? Has it been surveyed? Has it been pulled out of the green belt the very day they started selling it to outside parties for profit? Has a proper sales tax been submitted to the county? Is there a road maintenance plan to account for the trucks and heavy equipment coming up and down that road? And it runs from the top of Harts Gravel all the way down Highway 66 and all the way through town. Harts Gravel Road in particular is very narrow. There is very tight, blind corners. Go up there, drive it. I ask you to. Is that road the legal required width for said operations? I have witnessed the bus have to come to a complete stop at that corner in front of Michael's because there's simply not enough room. These are full-size semis with bunks coming down there to stop because there's simply not enough room for them to get past. I've talked to the bus garage. There are 20 stops between the high school kids and the middle school kids who ride together, and then 20 stops for the elementary school kids. That's 40 stops one way all the way to the school zone. How are we keeping these kids safe? In my house, it's a bus stop. My driveway has been continually blocked as of recent. I've had to walk my five-year-old and my eight-year-old between two full-size semis to get them on the bus, and then the bus can't turn around because it's blocked. How are we going to mitigate the safety of our children? All the way down, one way, 40 bus stops, all the way to the freeway. The fact of the matter is, is there is a blatant disregard for the welfare of the citizens in this county, for their water resources, for their air quality, and most importantly, their safety. And I want to know how this is going to be mitigated and enforced if the CUP is granted. They blatantly disregarded your all's direction to stop operations until they had the proper permitting in place. They had 17 trucks running out of that pit on a Saturday after you guys told them to stop. So, I think there needs to be a plan to hold them accountable, to operate under the rules and regulations that the other legitimate businesses are required to do in this county. Because let's be very honest, this is not an excavation for a barn or a farm. This is a for-profit, commercial gravel pit, and it needs to be treated as such for the CUP to be granted.
Thank you.
I have some documents I want to share with all you guys, just for your information. You want two?
Yeah, anyone who needs it.
Kent Carter. I live on Harts Gravel Road. First thing I'd like to address is what the legal easement right-of-way and/or access is to this property. The document I just handed out to you, the document date is the 27th of January 2014, where as Wilkinson's are requesting a 60-foot unrestricted right-of-way through our land that I believe to be a presumptive easement. We didn't sign these documents nor grant them a legal and recorded unrestricted right-of-way. And you all have a copy of the document, so I'm not going to read the entire document. I'll highlight some points. According to this document, the county road vacated the county road at the lobby gate that has been there for 30-plus years, which in turn turned the access through our property, on both sides of the road and the road, turned our property into a presumptive easement. And the lending institution, according to this document, was unwilling to make a loan because the Wilkinson's did have a recorded right-of-way. So before the CUP gets approved and to eliminate any further legal issues, I'd like to see someone prove to me or show me legal documentation that Wilkinson's have their right-of-way through our land to conduct a future visit. Also, I'm fairly impressed with how the notice letter was written, that the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for, quote, "temporary gravel pit slash land excavation for future hay storage or potential future farm," end quote. Long line is, the sole purpose of this mining excavation is to provide some clay to line ponds, holding ponds, for an ongoing development in the county. If they do or do not decide to build a barn that's beside the point or turn it into a future farm, you know, if you put lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig. I'd also like to know if this CUP is just for the clay mining operations or for both mining operations going on up Harts Gravel, and I'd like to know what the definition of temporary is. I'd like to see the dates for the extent of the proposed CUP. We have been and will continue to be good neighbors. We purchased this land as the fifth, sixth, and now seventh generation on this amazing piece of earth. It's a great place to live, raise kids, grandkids, and I will say that we've put up and tolerated a lot of change up there over the past several years. We have never today denied anyone access, and in fact, have tolerated a lot of traffic up that canyon from people that have gone on land or have a legal right to be up there. To prove to be presented and documented that all of the issues that my family has brought up that can be mitigated will support the CUP. If this isn't or can't be done, then it's your fiduciary obligation to deny the CUP.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Kip Adams, also speaking towards the topic of the CUP. I tell you, it's a very respectable business, and I would say that it has a respect for individual property rights as long as they're in accordance with the local, state, federal laws and jurisdictions. And I would ask that the planning commission, the planner, and the county engineer consider heavily those local, state, federal laws and regulations.
Thanks.
Hey, I just have a couple of brief comments to make on behalf of Dan. My name's Crystal Bybee. I'm Dan's daughter. He's authorized me to be here for him. I think there is, I think you guys are aware of the situation. A couple of the big issues that were brought up there are not true. Is it they're illegal? We have been in contact with the state. The upper gravel pit has been bonded now for several years, and as far as we know, the only thing that has to happen is that material is hauled out. That needs to change, and we are more than willing to work with the county in any way. We're obliged, more than willing to work with the county in any way, go through any, whatever requirements, documentation you need. Documentation requested can. In fact, we've already had a conversation with EMTSAW. They found nothing. They were not able to issue any citations at all.
Just before you go on, are you going to be speaking to this application?
Yes.
Okay, I just don't want you to double, have to say the same thing twice. So, if you can just hang on for one second, we'll move on to that piece, and then you'll be right back up here kind of saying the same things. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you're going to have an opportunity. Sid, I just wanted to clarify, you are speaking, you will be coming over to speak for this application. You're representing it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you'll have an opportunity in a minute. I just don't want you to do double duty tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anyone else for public comment? Nope? Go once, twice? Okay. We're going to move out of public comment. We're going to move on to item number one on our agenda. As we stated before, this applicant has asked us to postpone this to the 12th January meeting.
Yeah. Ray Nettleton met at the last planning committee meeting with you. He requested multiple items. One of those items was the construction drawings for the water tank. Those are not ready, so he's asked me to request their continuance for it.
Okay.
I would imagine he may have them ready by the January 12th, but if they're not, then we can request another continuance at that point.
Okay. So if someone wants to make a motion to postpone that?
Mr. Chairman, I propose that we, I move that we continue agenda item number one to the 12th January 23 meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone this until the 12th January. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion passes. Same thing with item number two?
Yeah, item two is the John Schlicky dude ranch CUP where they're expanding the list of uses, including events, weddings, aggregate, those types of items. There were several items that the county, the planning commission requested been met. He's met with UDOT. UDOT is requiring them to go through an access approval process, which requires a traffic generation study. That will probably take several weeks, so he's asked me to request a continuance until the 12th of January.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
No questions, but yeah, I'll take a motion on that.
I move we postpone the John and Barbara Schlicky CUP application until our January 12th meeting.
Okay, motion postponed. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. On to item number three.
This is item number three, which is a request for a conditional use permit. While I was writing the staff reports, I mistakenly put temporary gravel pit along with land excavation. In our code, they don't go together, and that was my mistake. This is just for the land excavation for where Mr. Wilkinson is looking to construct a future barn. Based on his construction, the attached site plan, the land excavation is, has exceeded the 1,000 cubic yards, which you're allowed to do without a permit, and as such, he's applied for conditional use permit. Staff has reviewed his application. The county engineer is here to speak on it as well, who has been up there to inspect the property. We are requesting approval of the conditional use permit for the land excavation based on what we.
Okay, so, just to clarify, so the application that's before us right now is for a land excavation permit to excavate?
That's correct.
Or construct, okay. Now, there's a lot of people out here that have a lot of comments, so we're not going to pretend that, we can't pretend they're not in the room. So, I think it's important to say that there's a lot of stuff that, the questions that were being raised, we do have to go through the agenda in a systematic way. So, I'm asking you to allow us to address this issue. Our agenda does have a business staff questions opportunity at the end where we will try and discuss these things, so I encourage you to kind of just stick with it. Let us get through this piece of it, and then we'll continue the conversation so that everybody has the information they need. A lot of things were raised tonight. We certainly don't want to ignore what we heard tonight, but the application we have, to clarify, is for excavation, which I think is different from what the perception, the public perception was coming out. So, okay. So, if you would, yeah, Mark, great to see you and hear from you again, so.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mark Miller, the consultant county engineer. We have a, it is rather confusing, so I get it. We have, we have four different ordinances that relate to gravel pit type of, or excavation, so to say. You have a regular gravel pit, and that's gravel pit, it sounds like maybe the one they have up the canyon, further on up the canyon, the Wilkinson's, where you have the mining and then the processing, which includes crushers and screens and washers, and you have all the equipment involved in processing material to get it to the right size. Aggregate, you're breaking rock down, cleaning sand, that type of thing. That would be a full-scale gravel pit. We have a ordinance for that. I can't speak to the legality of the one they have up the canyon. I do know that if it predates our ordinance, then it just goes back to whatever the state permits are, so I can't speak to the legality of anything going on up there. I haven't even seen it. Then we have another one that if you're doing a subdivision, you can do a temporary gravel pit, but it's only if it's part of a subdivision. So that one doesn't apply to this either. The CUP that we were made aware of, and Josh made me aware of, was somebody's up here hauling dirt out or material out that's more than 1,000 cubic yards. We do have an ordinance called landfills and land excavations. That's 887 in the county code. And so, and the engineer and surveyors went up per our code, and they did design and submitted drawings. This is after we shut them down, obviously. Again, I'm not going to speak to what happened after that because I don't know. But I'm just sticking to your ordinance, and I'm not going to play attorney up here. So.
Sorry, just one quick question. What did you mean, we shut them down?
I went up there after I found out that they had moved over 1,000 cubic yards and asked them to stop, and I actually met with Dan, and he agreed to stop. So, and then I notified the place where they were hauling the material to, and they agreed to not receive it as well. There's a big, long email that Jared Anderson, the county commissioners, that I put together that covers all of this. I don't know if they shared it with you all or not. After I met with them, surveyors went up to state the limits of the excavation, and then they did provide me, if you look at 887, there's the exceptions for permit. They didn't fall under any of those exceptions, and so they go on down past E where there's the inspections by themselves. And we've probably done over 20 of these since I've been here, and the planning commission has been involved in a lot of them. Going down all the standards that are listed in F, they submitted design drawings that comply with these standards and design specifications, so they comply with all of our standards. So, their proposal of work does comply with our, with 887 landfills and excavation. And so, the requirements, as you read them from F on down, hours of operation, rehabilitation, stormwater protection, detention, all of those things, slope, finish grading slope, everything, is all in their, in their permit or the design drawings that they submitted. And they actually did, in my estimation, comply very well with the requirements, the engineering requirements in your ordinance.
Thank you for that. Any questions for Mark while I still here, while he's standing up there?
When was it used up there to shut them down?
You know, I put it in my memo with Jared. Let me look real quick. It's sometime in November.
In November, okay.
Jared's email with the candidate would be Jay Anderson, is that correct, or would it be Jared? Oh, okay. I'm listening in my own.
That was close enough, right? Is that the timeframe? Are you looking for a specific date?
Probably three weeks ago. Maybe four.
Any other questions for Mark?
Again, I'll just reiterate one thing. We have the four different things. Josh had put the open pit extraction of earth material, which is very similar to this 887, which that's 8632. The 887 is the CUP process to do that. The two, those two ordinances really don't, they aren't much different as far as what they require, as far as rehabilitation, and neither one allows crushing of material and, you know, your typical gravel pit. and neither one allows crushing of material, and that, you know, your typical gravel pit type operation with the processing, what we call processing equipment in there. And I think the reason the term temporary comes and goes is because we typically catch these, very few people actually know they have to come to the county to ask for the, and so, we typically catch them, we had two up Lost Creek Canyon Road in Croydon last month as well, we had another one elsewhere, people start just hauling material out, they don't know that they need a permit to do it. Just for health safety and welfare, we have all of this, this stuff in place to ensure that not only are they operating within the hours of operating, that there's dust control, and that there's, you know, their slopes don't get too steep, and then that they rehabilitate the area with safe slopes, and that they retain the stormwater runoff pollutants and that sort of thing, so. The, the application, though, that they submitted, does, in my estimation, comply very closely with eight eight seven landfills and land excavations.
Do you know what the timeframe is on this, I'm trying to dig into it myself, but.
You know, it doesn't say, and they, when asked directly, when I asked Dan, how long does it take for you to get all this material out of here, of course, that's a function of how many trucks there are, right? He said two weeks. So, it's, it's really a function of how many trucks are running, so he's estimating two weeks.
Gary, can I ask you that question?
Yeah.
Mark, I, I'm curious, I, I hear Carter's side of that on the water, are you familiar with where their water well, where their source of water is?
In relation to the excavation side, I guess, in this, in this conversation?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, I know that, I get why they wouldn't want to have their streams rerouted, it is very expensive to have something like that done, but it's, and, you know, it's, I mean, any approval should include a, a condition that says that you verify that it's not within, you know, someone's water rights easement, or anybody's easement for that matter, for that matter, so. Because it's presented as if it's all just on his property, no easements going across it, and if there are, then those should have been shown, so, like I said, if there is a conditional approval, then it needs to, I, I think, just to be careful, you'd need to say, you know, that they're, they're not infringing on anyone else's easements or, or property, or, so that it's all in his property. Seems reasonable.
And what about selling the product you remove with an excavation CUP, that's?
It's not addressed. I think what, what the reason I say, or I bring that up is typically when they're selling, let's say the UDOT, this happened on the west corridor, everybody was clamoring in the area to be the provider to some of the field for UDOT, and it had to meet a very specific criteria, but some of the land over by Peterson did meet that criteria, and in something like, in a situation like that, we would definitely get involved with, because it's going to be a long-term thing, and we would get involved with exactly what equipment would be there, because it's not just loaders and trucks hauling material off, then you'd get involved with processing equipment and a lot of other things, so, and long-term effects on, on.
So if they did that, they would have to, that would be outside the bounds of what's existing?
Yeah, this, this landfills and land excavations, we've applied for the last eighteen years to, to things very similar to this, when people start moving more dirt, and then there's over a thousand cubic yards, but it's not a gravel pit, that's, that's when we've applied this, but once you start a commercial venture, long-term commercial venture to, for the sole purpose of selling material, then, then, you know, we look at it more, more like a gravel pit.
Guess I do have one question, just to clarify, I'm not sure exactly how it would be, because we do have another application where they applied for a CUP years ago, and then they started doing things different, and so they had to reapply for another CUP on the same property, where these two, with a gravel pit and this excavation CUP is now going on the same property, do they need to update? I don't know, does that make sense?
Yes, I, I think, I think it's a great question. The gravel pit, that's, again, I haven't seen, but I was made aware of by Dan, by the way, is up the canyon, they're up hard shovel though, away, so this is, this is remote from that, in fact, if you go through the gate, it's probably only a quarter to a third of a mile from the gate on the right side.
The excavation permit area?
Yeah, it's just right, just, just past the gates. In fact, when I've gone up to make sure that they aren't hauling, or I've been asked by the county to go up and check, I've been able to just stop at the gate and look and see if the equipment's moving, or if there's any trucks hauling, so I can actually see it from the gate, even if you can't see the actual excavation. Did that answer your question? I'm not sure.
I think we're, maybe, what we were trying to explore is, is whether or not, what's, what's, how is this connected to any existing gravel operations that are going on?
Yeah.
And I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but basically what I heard you say was, you don't know anything about it, you don't know, they, they could have been pre-existing in the code, we don't know. All valid questions, and I want to, I want to kind of get to that a little bit, because the public's here and they've asked those things, I just want to keep this focused on the excavation permit, and then I think we'll, we need to have that discussion, but.
Yeah, and I, I did serve as a consultant engineer for the attorney that represented gravel pit suits throughout Utah for a lot of years, and, so I do know a lot about the grandfathering and all the other things related to maybe what's going on upstream. In fact, I was asked by one of the commissioners, is, would this, would this be considered part of that, and, and my answer was no, because we're looking at it as a completely separate operation of taking material out in order to make room for a building.
That does answer my question, I didn't know, even though we were talking about just the excavation, if that needed to be upgraded, because there's also other mining going on there, too.
Yeah, that was a concern by Jared.
Sure, and I was gonna, I was gonna try and get to that a little bit later, but I, like, my question was, I, I don't know if there is, is there an existing CUP for any gravel operations out there right now?
Well, if it predates our code, then there would be.
But, are you aware of any existing conditional permits that we have, something? Did you see, is there a gravel pit below where they're excavating as well, or, because someone had mentioned there was, there was two, two gravel operations.
One's higher up.
Right, but the excavation, is the excavation area what someone had mentioned is the?
The rock one's higher up, that's the second, or the first one, then the lower one's down there by the gate.
The excavation.
Oh, so it's the, so the lower one is the excavation site?
Yes.
Okay. It's probably right in here. Okay, so there's the other one. Okay, I was just trying to answer some of the questions and get it straight in my head, because it sounds like there was two things, but the one, the lower area is the excavation site they're asking for a conditional use permit?
Yeah, but seeing football under this land excavation.
Okay, any other questions for Mark or staff? No? I think we have some questions amongst ourselves, thank you, appreciate that.
You may also want to give.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. Do you want to, applicant want to come up? What you got? Does applicant want to speak? Sorry. Sorry, now you can, you have an opportunity to re-say everything you said, or?
No, thanks, I think it's hard for everybody to get a clear picture of what's happening, but I don't know if there's anything else I need to address, I think that we've addressed most of the issues, I felt like, other than, I can tell you that I'm, Dan's obviously, safety's one of his big things, too, if you know him, that's one of his big issues, that was a concern that I, I heard brought up. But yeah, we don't, we don't want to cause an issue at all, it is a very temporary thing, that area right there is just a super temporary thing, so, I don't know if you have questions, or if it's, I figure out, it's just a temporary thing, and we're happy to do whatever you guys need, or whatever documentation you need.
Do you know approximately how long it will take?
You know, that I can't speak to, because I'm not in the field, I know that it's not something that can happen now, with weather, right, but from what I understand, it was a very short thing, and I did hear Dan say about two weeks.
But you don't know when it will start?
That I don't, that I don't.
So are we talking like, a June thing, like, would that be the? What do you think about that, Josh? Is there, is there, I didn't see an ending on this one, is it?
I don't think there's anything in our code that requires it to.
As, I was just wondering, if it says temporary, what does that mean? Is there an expiration on it, or?
Well, there's nothing that says temporary for land excavation.
Okay, just says until, it can only be done, this CUP applies to the, this project, you excavate this land.
Right.
Under these very specific things.
And the submitted maps and documents to find the total amount of bill that they're looking to take out.
Okay. I think the public was really good tonight about bringing not just clamor, but some other, some other information to us, that I think that was really useful. One of them being that, you know, we, we should look at, look at things that we can mitigate, right? So, one of the things, there's a list, a whole list of things that people have brought up, Mark addressed, I think, the majority of them, the dust, what else did you say?
If I can, Jared, have you seen this, Crystal, are you, are you familiar with that document?
The easement?
The legal between Wilkinson and Carter? I, in my opinion, that's got to be answered one way or the other, on how I would make that a part of my conditions.
The dispute between property lines is really a civil matter?
Yeah, but how do you issue a conditional use permit if there's a problem?
Well, the county isn't aware of the problem.
But we are now.
I'm sorry?
But we are now.
You're aware of somebody that claims that there's a problem, but that doesn't necessarily mean there is a problem.
No, but I guess my point is, what Steve's saying is that something like that probably should be answered.
I think, I like what, the way Mark addressed it, maybe, he said that you could certainly put a condition that, to verify that it was within the easement before, would that satisfy satisfaction?
That's about like the spring easement.
It would, but I think it applies to.
Well, this is on the road, because I think, this is past the gate, where it's no longer county road, so who has the, the right to access that private property?
I think that's something that could be lifted, too, I'm sure there's.
I, I just, you know, not decide one way or the other, I just think it's a fair thing between two parties that you have to look at before you can issue a conditional use permit if there's a potential.
If they have a right of way?
Yeah.
They have a right of way to the site?
If they don't have a right of way, then there shouldn't be a conditional use permit issued.
That could be a condition that.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable condition.
That the applicant has an easement, has a right of way to the site.
We're just making a recommendation, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Does this one go to the commission?
Yes, yeah, we're just, we're making a recommendation to the commission.
No, land excavation is C two.
Oh, is it?
It's just us.
I think.
Unless we wanted to kick it up to him, but.
I think, I think it's important for us to, to look at the email that county attorney sent out to us as well, just as a reminder for CUPs. He was here the last meeting, talked at length about this, but he sent all of us an email, has everybody seen it? I'll just read the highlights just as a reminder. This is from, for conditional uses from Utah State Code, says, "A land use authority shall approve a conditional use if reasonable conditions are proposed, or can be imposed, to mitigate the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use in accordance with applicable standards," so we have standards we can apply to mitigate. The requirements described in subsection two A, to reasonably mitigate anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed conditional use, does not require elimination of the detrimental effect. And then, if land use authority propose, and, so in this case, we are the land use authority at C two, it's what, if a land use authority proposes reasonable conditions on a proposed conditional use, the, the land use authority shall ensure that the conditions are stated on the record and reasonably relate to mitigating the anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use. If the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed conditional use cannot be substantially mitigated by the propose, by the proposal or the imposition of reasonable conditions to achieve compliance with applicable standards, the land use authority may deny the conditional use. So anyway, he wanted us to be aware of that again, so it's, I think it's a good refresher to read that. So, let me tee this up a little bit again, so, public came out, it sure seemed like they're asking for a conditional use permit for gravel, gravel pit, I get that, but the application we have before us is for excavation for a very specific site, so we just have to, we have to look at that first, and we can have discussions maybe later on, on some of the other stuff, but, and I would encourage the public to hang around, we're not ignoring you, it's just we didn't know, I, I haven't been in that, in that part of the county long enough to know any of the things that you're telling us, so we're, we're writing it down. Somebody in the public asked us that we, or mentioned that we, we told them to stop, just to clarify, as the planning commission, we, we don't get involved with that, we're just looking at administrative stuff. So, there is county enforcement that happens at the planning level, not at the planning commission level. We're here mostly to look at administrative functions and, and to make recommendations, so, the day, the things that happen day in and day out of the county, we, we don't know about. So, a lot of new information for us tonight, never, never heard this discussion before. So, having said that, what kind, what discussions do we have specifically for the excavation piece of what we're looking at? Had some proposals for mitigation, looks like the application itself talks about dust. All right, what are the other things you mentioned, Mark? Do you remember?
It's part of eight eight seven F.
Oh, actually, yeah, because I.
I want to make sure we capture anything we can mitigate.
I think, I think it's very appropriate, so, I'm actually going down this list for it, because these are the items that I looked at to make sure that what they submitted complied with this. The hours of operation had to be stated, and those were between seven and five thirty, seven AM to five thirty PM, and then there's a, there's the possibility that those be extended via the zoning administrator, but there was not a request for that, so they just put that, they would comply with that on their application. They said that, and then, "All grading excavation in or contiguous to residential neighborhood shall be carried on only Monday through Friday," they did, I guess you could argue that it's not contiguous to residential, but it didn't matter, they said, they did submit that they would do Monday through Friday. The dust and dirt control, exactly as it reads here, is what they proposed in their plan, the slopes, the excessive slopes, and typically, these go back to what are called angles of. angles of repos or what the material holds itself at. But usually 33% or one and a half to one is about, is about what it is. And I believe that that's what they, I was just trying to read the drawing, but without my reading glasses, I can't see it. I recall that it, it was either one and a half to one or two to one. This is a little flatter than what the steepest allowable would be. The fill material didn't apply in this instance because of this hauling, that hauling material out. The drainage was adequately addressed. They do have a big detention facility at the bottom for two purposes. One, to take off the peaks of stormwater runoff, and secondly, to capture stormwater pollution. They also have had stormwater mitigation, the silt fencing, that type of stuff in place on the plan, shown on the plan. The finished cuts and fills were shown. The drawing that you all are looking at shows the existing contours and the proposed contours with, with the slopes. The, the back filling didn't really apply in either of the compaction of fills. The erosion control and landscaping was addressed in there adequately and it's almost verbatim what we have. That's what they're committing to. And the filling for agricultural number 11 didn't. There are inspections on all of these. There's one, I have to do one before they excavate during, and then the final inspection. On item 12, the final inspection, they actually have that in their, they're planning on that in their application. And that's where I would go to make sure that everything had been mitigated. The slopes cut back for plan, revegetated, and, you know, everything else would be required from all other, you know, the, the excavations of this type.
Okay. Is there anything else from your perspective that we could try to mitigate or we need to mitigate?
Well, there, you know, the county doesn't really regulate pollutants because it's regulated by the National Clean Water Act. It's, it's, they've allowed each state to regulate it on their own and then report back to the National Clean Water Act. But the stormwater pollution prevention is a function of state regulations. Unfortunately, we don't have the teeth to regulate any of that. They did include that in, in this, but we can't, well, we don't have the ordinance to regulate pollutants. Like air quality, for example, we typically, we did request this because ordinance did have dust control. And so we were able to make sure that it was in the application. But as far as runoff pollutants or anything else, they do have the pond at the bottom and then the typical stormwater pollution prevention measures in place on their plan. But we, as a county, don't regulate it. On the other side, the Wasatch Front, you would be regulating it because the state did hand it down to those communities over there. They're called NS4 communities.
Marco, I'm looking through, just trying to think of reasonably anticipated detrimental effects. One of the things I heard was about traffic. Is there anything that we, anything you foresee with excavation that would impact traffic? School buses in the morning, things like that?
Absolutely. I mean, anytime you take a very rural road like that, that then suddenly introduce very large side dump vehicles or even belly dump type vehicles on there, there's, it increases danger because, again, the children, all, all the reasons that she mentioned. And it would not be unreasonable to, again, that's why I call the conditional use permit, to impose conditions. I, I think of one that we regulated ten years ago where we, we put speed limits on the trucks coming out of an area. Those speed limits were like 30 and I found myself following trucks all day one day. But in this instance, I think 30 is much too fast for a road like this, you know, 30 miles per hour. But, but those are things that, that I believe you can require as a, as a conditional use permit. It does seem like that many trucks coming down this road. You know, if they're going the regular speed limit, it, it could create an issue. So it does seem a little less safe and so, it just seems less safe. I don't know how much. But imposing a, a speed limit would be very reasonable in my estimation.
What about the issue with people trying to get kids to the bus stop and things like that?
That's something that you did impose on Wasatch Peaks, that they not haul during certain hours. And those hours were, per their development agreement, they didn't have to do it, but they did just comply because it was requested. But not hauling during the hours and if the school were to, during school bus hours, you know, that would be a very reasonable condition.
Do you have a recommendation for number of trips per hour?
Well, that's, yeah, how many trucks, like per day? I mean, that's.
Per day or per hour or something?
Again, this isn't a long-term thing, but I, I, I think that, no, any recommendation I would have would be arbitrary. But I, it's not saying you can't come up with something. And I, I just, I know the Skyview permit, for example, or Skyview pit, for example, has maximum number of vehicles per day or they can come out of there. So, so yeah, that's something you could impose. It's just not addressed in your ordinance and I don't want to throw something arbitrary out there. Seems rea, the thing is, it, the duration goes longer. You know, it's three weeks instead of two weeks. If you slow it down or four weeks, whatever, I, you know, it's a.
Yeah, give and take.
Yeah. So there's a certain amount of material that needs to be hauled out of there, that they're requesting to be hauled out of there.
So do they have an idea how much has got to come out of there? So you know how many actual truck loads?
Yeah, they, they actually show, when somebody mentioned 15, I just ran some numbers and thought, well, if, if they were running four trips a day, I actually followed them one time. It takes them a long time to get where they were going. And if they were, if they were hauling, each of those trucks were doing four a day, which I think might be high, then they could haul as much as 1,000 cubic yards out of there in a day. And I think, if I recall again, it's my reading glasses, because I, the print's just way too small. But, but I, I do think it's in the neighborhood of between seven and 12,000 yards. I can't recall. Oh, and by the way, I did find my email and it was, was in October, not November. So.
When they were asked to stop?
Yes. I apologize.
Okay. So we're, we're kind of closing out the discussion about reasonable and reasonably anticipate, anticipated detrimental effects. Anything else you guys can think of that you'd like to address?
Yeah, when Crystal comes back up, I just had a couple of questions.
Okay. Awesome. Nothing else for Mark? Thanks.
We'll be happy to come back.
Yeah. Crystal, would you like to come up for a sec? Thanks. Excuse me.
Next time I won't let Diane get out of town.
Lesson learned.
I, I just had a question about dust. What, do you, I got the impression from what I'm hearing from Mark that there's been a plan presented.
The actual road going up to that excavation site, I don't even know how much dirt road, but you have almost asphalt a little ways through the gate. And then once you're past, probably as fast as it gets a little dusty where the course is at, if. But I know they run water on it all the time. And that road gets a lot of traffic. I don't know if anybody's been up there this time, but there are a lot of people that go up there besides us. But I, I don't know, as far as dust, we're willing to run water. If it's, if it's a concern, if somebody reaches out, we can, it's not a problem to reach the road.
Yeah. So it sounds like it's in, Dan had, has a plan for dust control? I think the next natural question is how do we, how do you police that, right? That, everybody's always going to have that question. Well, how do we know? Yeah, it's in there, but how do we know? What if it's dusty? What do they do? And?
I don't see why those, or if it's an issue, then you reach out to me or Diane or whoever and say, hey, the road's getting dusty.
Or Josh.
I, I just don't. I don't perceive that being an issue.
Or Josh. Now, that's a key point as well, that the county is the, kind of the controller of the.
That's who they need to call.
Of the CUP.
Our, our code requires them to dampen. It's, it's all in the code. So we just have to make that a condition that they comply with the requirements and standards in the code.
Can I ask you too, do you know the parameters we're talking about with the Carter's water source? Do you know what?
I don't. I, I, I don't know on there how that would affect it. I really can't speak to that at all. I don't have any.
Does, what, a condition that we can, to verify that it's not within the easement?
Yeah, I, yeah, we can do that.
So, I mean, you're not going to keep hauling out now because of winter? Is that kind of what, are you still doing?
No, it's not feasible right now.
So my suggestion is you have a couple of things to resolve, that you don't issue the condition tonight. You let some of these things get resolved before we do it. Such as the water, the access, those things like that, because it's not going to file them up. They're not hauling out till weather breaks. That gives time to have all the things taken care of so that we're not having to.
So to verify the right of way to the site and make sure that there's no easements running on it.
Come on, do you?
Do you anticipate working during school schedules?
That can be worked around. In fact, I know that that is something that they had in place. They were really mindful of that, when else, when the trucks were hauling. It's just getting the truck drivers to do it is the issue.
But that could be a condition.
But I was, like you said, if you want to be monitoring it.
Yeah, I've got that on the list of things to say that's a condition.
It may even happen outside.
I think your neighbor will monitor for you and call.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't happen in June, that's not an issue, right?
That's the other thing I think.
I mean, your only issue is if it's during the school year.
Yeah.
So it's not really a.
I mean, the ideal timing of it would be to do it after school's, you know, one of, so you don't have to worry about.
Well, that's my question. Is this just a short-term operation then? Like how short term would you go?
Well, like you said, it depends on the number of trucks, right?
Couple of weeks.
It just, I don't know. I know I was told about two, but that wasn't a lot of trucks. A lot of trucks.
Yes?
There is a sequence that Chris Russian proposed in their application. I can't read it, but if any of you.
Yeah. So anything, what they've proposed, that would be the conditional use permit. Under these conditions, the, the permit is given. So I think, again, it comes down to, it comes down to enforcement. I think that's always, that would be my question if I was a neighbor is, yeah, it's great that we say we do this, but let's make sure we do it. So, and, and to be clear, Josh is the, is the point of contact.
But you didn't add Mark. Part of what he was saying, Mark.
Yeah, but through Josh. Josh would, yeah. Josh would contact him and it sounds like Mark's traveled behind some trucks a few times. So nothing new for him. So you're interested in your comments on what Shane said?
I, I don't think that's a reason to continue it for months while they do that. You can make that a condition of approval that they verify the easement. That way, that way staff doesn't have to hold on to this and track it and bring it back. We'll just verify and we'll have, yeah, the Wilkinsons bring in the group.
So we need to figure out the number of trips.
Yeah. So just to finish on Shane's point. So the, the two options are, one is that, hey, this conditional use program cannot be approved until staff validates that all these things are true, or it comes back to us.
Well, so here's the other thing. You know, your number of trips, your hours of operation. In my, my thinking with it, just, I've drove that road quite a few times and there's two particular spots that you're not going to get around a truck going up through there. You're just not going to do it. And that, and so the ideal thing would be for safety of kids, you know, as far as school goes, would be to do it in June. So it'd be interesting to see kind of their timeframe, when they would like to do it. Cause that's going to help us know what type of conditions. Cause if we're going to do conditions, I would say that maybe their hours of operation just got cut way back, you know, 10 to 2 o'clock or something, or whatever. It's time you get the kids to school or even 9 o'clock before they can start hauling, which then makes it.
Sorry. I think the last bus leaves up there around 8:00 in the morning. The only one you have is a kindergarten bus.
Yeah.
And depending, I know there is a kindergartner at the end of the road. But I, I can say, I think that's a valid concern, but I also think that there isn't a safer place to be than the bus. Like, I just feel like, I mean, the buses all follow the right procedures. Everyone follows the right procedures. If the bus is red, lights are flashing, it's flashing, right? I just, I get that safety is an issue.
Yeah, it's just, you have concern from others too. So it's the both sides of the issue of finding that balance so that everybody can be somewhat happy.
Yeah, and we're looking for reasonable solutions.
There is one kindergartner at the end of the road. I have a kindergartner, so there's two kindergartners registered in.
Yeah. That's why I say the condition on hours of operation could depend on what time you're wanting to actually do it. Whether if you want to start up in April or if you just wanting to wait till June or.
Just there's no hauling during school bus pickup and drop offs.
Yeah, that would be the condition. That would, you know, the operations would be here, except if you're doing it during school hours, it can't be done during these hours. That would, that should take care of that maybe.
I just want some clarification on their spring. I think that needs to be protected. I'm not sure where the spring is versus where their operations are.
Sure. And I think, I think we captured.
We can make that a condition.
As a, as a condition that this.
That there's no easements.
Won't be approved until staff validates that.
There's no easements on the site.
I'm just, I'm just trying to give you both ways. You guys decide which way you want to go, obviously. But the, the two options are to make sure these things are done or staff make sure they're done. Either way, they have to be, they have to make sure they're done before they can start their operations. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? No? Okay. So where are we at in our discussion then? They have an application before us for an ex, a temporary excavation permit. There's a lot of other discussion in the room that we'll try and talk about a little bit later on, but let's focus on this one for now. Do you think we have reasonable stuff? Does anybody want discussion or is anybody ready for a motion?
I think we can put conditions on it. I, just like the number of strip, trips per day and, and speed limit, I have.
Yeah. So maybe that's a good point. Let's read through what we have so far.
So how are you going to do number of trips? That's, I'm struggling on that one.
Well, they said the maximum, they could probably excavate with four trucks is 1,000.
Four, four trips.
Trips a day, but not the number of trucks. You could have five trucks.
That's what, yeah. So it depends on how many trucks. But you're saying one truck could probably do four trips in a day. Is your kind of.
I, I was generous because when I followed them, it took, well, it seemed like it's a trip, but, but conceived, I don't know in those hours of operation if they could. Again, if you said, if you said 20 trucks per day or 40 trucks per day, it just, it's a function of how long you want those trucks on the road. Of course, if you allow, you know, you could also put a condition on there, because I've seen this before, on how many trucks could leave per hour. And what that does is it spaces the. before, on how many trucks could leave per hour, and what that does is it spaces them out, so that you don't have, you know, too many trucks, now, they are large trucks, but they take a while to load, so, they're going to be fifteen minutes apart, to twenty minutes apart anyway, but I have seen that condition before, on so many per hour, so you could do, I don't know what, hours of operation, I, I think it's almost more safe to say how many could come out of there per hour, because then you're not just, you know, piling up hard scrabble roads with a bunch of side dunks.
Can we show you a picture of the trucks stacked up?
Appreciate the discussion, again, this is, it's our, it's our opportunity, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, you know, four trucks per hour would keep them fifteen minutes apart.
What's the, we're, again, go back to the reasonable term, what's a reasonable, doesn't sound like we know, right?
That's the whole thing, is...
Don't, I'm not an expert, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure, how many...
Limit to four trucks an hour.
So, let's figure out how many total trucks it would take to do the whole project.
What, what, what are we trying to mitigate here?
Well, what I'm wondering is how many, you know, you're gonna say, let's do maybe ten trucks one day, but it's gonna take three hundred trucks to get it all done.
So, takes longer.
Yeah, so, I think that would help to kind of figure out the timing of it.
So what makes it, what makes it safer, what, what public safety issue are we trying to mitigate? The, the...
Well, but you got, you got, you got the issue of how long you want this project to go, is it better to just say, okay, let's get this done in two weeks and have it done and out of our hair, or do we want this to last for a month, or two months?
I see what you're saying.
You know, but that would help me know, okay, it's gonna take ten trucks, so, yeah, I could deal with that for two weeks to get it done, it's gonna take three hundred trucks, so, you know, where's your balance?
I don't know, I think we're at a point where we have to come up with something...
We could, like you say, per hour, I think is a good one.
Say, hey, is this reasonable, and propose it, or, I don't know who's gonna do the math, if we were, you were to post...
Well, he had, Mark's got an idea.
Well, he suggests maybe four trucks per hour.
Four trucks per hour.
It's arbitrary, yeah.
Well...
Is ten minutes better, or fifteen better, ten, I don't know, I used to...
Have four?
In my mind...
At least there's some control, I hear your point.
Fifteen minutes apart, maybe a little bit tight for up there.
A maximum of four per hour.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe two, so you got half-hour intervals, or something. I don't know, I'm just...
Stretches out the time, yeah.
Well, that's the whole thing about it, is...
Or three trucks per hour, every twenty minutes?
I believe the Skyview pit is five trucks per hour.
The what?
On Holt Highway.
But that's a little different area that they're coming out of, versus this one up there, too.
But again...
This is a fixed amount.
It's a temporary thing, we've got so much material to haul out, we do, limited, too much, it's gonna go on for a month, that's...
Well, yeah, that's, that's the thing, too, is to drag it out's not a good thing either.
But the thing we're trying to mitigate is just the safety of the residents.
Right.
So we maybe wanna eliminate the hours, I know it'll take a little bit longer, but we do wanna make sure they're safe.
Right.
The other thing that concerns me, too, is, you watch them truck drivers, depending on how they do it, they move as fast as they can move.
So we need a speed limit?
I, I think that you need to impose one, but the other problem you got is enforcement of making sure that they...
Well, that's...
They do...
That's part, that's part two, versus to set the standard.
You set the standard, that's up to the sheriff.
It's the downside of the project that you have to fight.
You mentioned thirty was too fast, so fifteen?
Twenty-five?
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty-five, something in that.
So, you know, I, I think twenty, 'cause that's what your school zone is.
That's, that's fine, whatever you...
Twenty miles per hour?
Okay.
And I, I can get requested, police it now and again.
I think that would be a good thing, just a periodic...
It's actually better to spot check, because...
Yeah, and then you...
They, they see my truck, and then, you know, if they know I'm sitting there all day, then, but, I get complaints, I go, but if I spot check, but, again, that would be something that Josh would tell me.
Okay.
So what did we decide on number of trucks per hour, four, three?
Four.
Four? Fifteen minutes?
I think four's pretty heavy, but that's my opinion.
But the truck should be out of the area.
You got fifteen minutes, so you got them coming up and coming back, so you're gonna have...
Yeah, that's fine, you said four.
A two-way trip.
A two-way trip, it's not just one way, it's up and back.
So what we said, one?
Three, that, or...
How long's it gonna take you to drive hardscrabble at fifteen, or twenty miles an hour?
For that portion?
Yeah.
It's less than two miles, but it should be all the way through town, down Highway sixty-six and through town, it affects more than hardscrabble road, here.
We can't regulate highway services.
Yeah, that's harsh.
Truck number?
Yep, so number, so three?
I, too little, four? I don't know enough about trucks, so...
I don't either, we're gonna have to...
Now, maybe just during school operation, three, three per hour, but if it's outside of school?
I think all the time.
All the time?
Just because of the residents, the traffic.
Yeah.
Okay.
It might take it a little bit longer, what, two weeks versus a month, or six weeks, I don't know, what the... Three?
Three, okay.
Okay. So, the initial use permit itself regulates dust and dirt control, slopes, drainage, we've discussed additional conditions for traffic, speed, number of trips per hour, did we miss anything? Oh, school hours.
What about those far as operation during school?
No, no haulings during school, bus pickup and drop-off times.
Okay, so, that'd be on them to find out what those times are?
Yep. Condition for the easement and...
The excavation is entirely on Wilkinson's property, and verify that there are no easements running over the site.
And then the access.
And the access, that they have a right-of-way.
I think those are the last two I have, did we miss any?
So I'm counting five conditions, that's on our...
Yeah, the initial, the first ones I talked about were already in their, in their application, that they would, Debbie, you did mention an additional one, just to restate, they must comply with eight-eight-seven.
Eight-eight-seven F, which is a given, but...
It's a given, but it doesn't hurt, I guess. And then the two for staff, would be, verify those two, Josh? Anything else? Okay, we'll take a motion if anybody's ready.
I'll, I'll start, give me some help, okay?
Yep.
We don't have a written one, so I'm, I move we approve the Wilkinson excavation permit, CUP, on parcel number zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero-one dash zero-zero-three-one, and serial number zero-one dash zero-zero-three dash three-four-four, with the findings and conditions listed in the staff report dated December eighth, twenty-twenty-two, with the following additional conditions. That the excavation is contained entirely on Wilkinson's property, and to verify that there are no easements running over the site, that they meet the requirements and standards stated in eight-eight-seven F of Morgan County Code, that the applicant has a valid right-of-way to the site, that the number of trucks be limited to three per hour, with a maximum speed limit of twenty miles per hour, that there are no hauling, hauling during school bus pickup and drop-off, drop, drop-off times. Did we get them off?
Do you wanna just, look, with the twenty miles an hour, just say it's on hardscrabble road, though?
Yeah, speed limit twenty miles per hour on hardscrabble road.
So you can't do that, too, on Highway sixty-six.
Okay, I don't think we missed...
And then Monday through Friday, that's the hours, that was part of the other condition.
That's, that's in our code, yep.
That's in their application.
Would Saturday be better without school operating, just a thought?
Would Saturday be better without what, sir?
With the safety, school's not happening on Saturday, so you don't have to, you would not have to avoid buses or kids at all.
Well, yeah, the way we worded it, your, the hours of application are still seven to five-thirty, but no, don't operate during school bus hours.
What I'm saying with Saturday, sorry, I didn't want to, I just, if buses are concerned, that was just a thought.
Oh, that was your application to Monday, for Monday, for Friday, that was what you, yeah.
It's part of the code, too, it's Monday through Friday.
Okay, I think we captured everything. So we have a motion, do we have a second for discussion or approval?
A second?
Okay, we have a second, any discussions on what we've, we've got? Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, on to item number four.
The next item is for application number twenty-two-point-zero-six-four, this is the Wendy Wilkinson Revocable Trust at fifty-six eighty-four Garnet Drive, the property zoning is R one twelve, this zoning was approved in February of this year, the property's total acreage right now is plus six-two acres, which is a little bit larger than twenty-seven thousand square feet, after the division, they are proposing to divide, one lot will be fourteen thousand three hundred seventy-five square feet, the other lot will be twelve thousand six hundred thirty-two square feet, the division of land meets the zoning, staff has reviewed it, county engineers reviewed the proposed plan, and we have found that they are in substantial performance with all the requirements of our code, with the exception of providing the water and sewer will serve letters, I have been told that they will be provided to me, as a condition of approval, I would recommend we add a stipulation that those be provided to staff prior to the county commission, with that, we are recommending approval, the motion should be a recommendation for, a recommendation to the county commission, since this is a plan. With that, if you have any questions, I can answer them.
I do not, did, are we clear on what Josh just recommended, providing for, for staff in, as an additional condition?
Yeah.
Any questions for staff? Staff can't on the, here, that they wanna speak?
I believe they are, I'm here, but I don't wanna speak.
Okay. You're right, but you don't have to.
I, I, I thought that the water and sewer was done, I went to the survey yesterday, I think they got it on last night, and the water, so, that process is underway, I don't know how hard that's gonna be, the sewer was a little bit threatened.
Yeah, yeah, you're not gonna be able to build or do anything on it until you do, so, and that's the conditions.
Yeah, if you have any questions, I can...
Anybody? No? I, I don't, thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion on this, if not, take a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Rose Hill Phase Four Plan Amendment, application number twenty-two, decimal zero-six-four, located at fifty-six eighty-four Garnet Drive, based on the findings, and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated December eighth, two thousand twenty-two, with following additional comments, with the additional conditions, that the applicant provide the planning office with will serve letters for water and sewer.
Before the commission meeting?
I'm sorry, is this, this is a recommendation, oh, before the commission...
Before the commission meeting.
Thank you.
Good? Yep. Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
A second over here, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, on to item number five. So we're discussion, public hearing, right?
Item number five is for application number twenty-two-point-zero-six-five, the MND Nelson Rezone, the property is located west of Old Highway Road and Cottonwood Candy Road, the intersection there, current zoning is eight-twenty, general plan designates this property for commercial, the property size is approximately forty-four-point-seven-five acres, they are recommending, they are requesting approval of the zone from eight-twenty to town center. Staff has reviewed the general plan, we've also reviewed the zoning ordinance, as the general plan designates this for commercial, and town center is a commercial district, staff is recommending approval, as it appears to be in line with the general plans, with that, if you have any questions, I can answer them, or the applicant is here.
Any questions for staff, just, it's been a while since we did a public hearing for legislative, so, we came up with a couple acronyms, remember, we've never remembered, so, do you wanna hear the applicant, and then go into public hearing, and then the applicant come back and answer any questions from public hearing? Does that sound like a reasonable order? Okay, let's do that.
Robert's rule of order would say that that's the correct...
We've had, yeah, go back and listen to the discussions we had on that, very, very issue, but thank you for clarifying that. Okay, is the applicant want to speak to this?
Yeah. Thank you, Josh, for presenting that.
And for putting you last on the agenda.
And putting you last, yeah, thank you. No, I think Josh pretty much covered it, the future land use is designated as commercial for this piece of property, the zone that we're, we're requesting is the town center, which is a commercial district, as part of that zone, we feel that we are complying with that, and we're just hoping that we can work with staff to put together a great project, so. Dwight, can you turn to speak after public comment, or is it all...
We will.
Perfect.
It, it's probable that someone will ask a question that you'll want to address, so we'll wanna give you that opportunity to make sure, yeah. Okay, yeah, if you don't have anything else to add, or any questions at this time for the applicant, we can go into public hearing? Yeah? Okay, so, motion to go into public hearing, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sounds super official, but now we're in the official public hearing for, for this item, so, anybody that would like to speak to this, please come up, microphone is on the podium.
Tina Kelly, Mountain Green, tell me if you can't hear me, because I've been told by my husband that I'm hard to hear. To begin with, so I've tried to narrate what I was like, oh, to begin with, I didn't like the town center designation, but it has passed, and it exists today, it was to give the county more say for the commercial development in the town center, it was discussed at the time that there were, and the development agreement, that you guys put into that, it was discussed at the time that there were only two, possibly three areas for the town center, one in Mountain Green, one in Peterson, and possibly one in Croydon, the discussion on Mountain Green was very specific as to which area you were considering, this property is not in the town center, nor was it discussed as part of the town center, when the planning commission was developing this zone. when the planning commission was developing this zone. It was specifically spoken about as that area around Trapper's Loop where the interchange would come in and connect to. The property east of Sinclair and north of Old Highway, since the property south was in a CD development agreement already. The applicant wants commercial, which may or may not be appropriate, that's what the general plan at the time called for. However, this zone allows for monthly houses and high density as well. This property is on the outskirts of the town and should therefore be getting less dense, not higher density. The applicant maintains he wants commercial and the future land use map says commercial, so they feel it's appropriate. However, again, the Town Center designation allows for high density housing, which was not contemplated by the future land use map, nor by the area plan for Mountain Green, which is part of the general plan. And the minute links on the website are not working correctly, or I would have provided those as backup. I tried through, through the weeks to get them in. A rezone is not a given. It is a legislative item in which you have the most leeway for consideration. There are no boxes to be checked on a county form as in the subdivision process. There are a lot of things that should come together to make a rezone feasible, but they're not codified. And you cannot ask the applicant what they're going to do with the property once it's rezoned, or at least you can't hold them to what they say. You cannot make a rezone with conditions, as the county learned the hard way in the past. You should look at the zone and ask if it's appropriate. All of the use is allowed by the zone being requested, not just what you think they might do based on what they said they might do. It is a serious legislative decision, the most serious I think you can make as a body. It is a serious legislative decision which impacts not only the landowner, but the neighboring properties as well as the community as a whole, and it should be considered very carefully. And then I have this last note. The county website keeps crashing as I tried to access the future land use maps, and it makes it hard to comment to that, but every time I tried to zonie on it, it would just crash. When the general plan was passed, I don't believe the Town Center zone existed, at least the last general plan. I couldn't verify that because of the website. I may be wrong in saying that I can't verify, but I don't think that you had created the Town Center when the last update was done. I just really want you to think very seriously about this. Again, a rezone isn't a given, there are a lot of things that have to come together to make it right. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Mike Lasuda, I've been a resident of Mountain Green for, for 40 years. I suspect you're some up there and they go, he's a transplant, so I pulled us into him anyway. Anyway.
We're not sure what the timeframe on transplant is.
I served on a couple of planning committees, not planning commissions, but master plans for Mountain Green. And then when we got together and discussed our issues, what we didn't want was Leighton City. I'd like you guys all to look in your minds eye and say, okay, where's the city center in Leighton? We didn't want that. And so far, things have been pretty good. The example, like, like Tina said, will be the intersection of Old Highway and Trapper's Loop. And we said, okay, the more dense housing, which we do have, we have townhomes going in, I think it was 89 or 90 or something like that, townhomes, that's in harmony with what we wanted 30 years ago. I, yeah, as far as the commercial goes, I feel the same way about the, the city center. There's plenty of room down there to, to keep the cohesive center city where we wanted to originally, and not to drift away because somebody's got an idea. Now, I understand they knocked the ground, I understand they want to do something with it. Let's use Wade Warner subdivision, it's half acre lots. It's a little further away from the city center, here again, in harmony with what we wanted 30 years ago. Back then, we said, well, we're a new community, we're not going to go the way that Leighton did, and I sure hope we don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jessie. I'm probably pretty heavily impacted by this. I live right across the street from our school, on Old Highway. I'm pretty heavily involved in Weber County stuff, I work over there, so I go into like a lot of the meetings for Eden, I don't pay enough attention to what's going on here, so I'm trying to fix that. And I'm not as educated as I probably should be, so, you know, don't fault me for that. But in looking at the overall plan of Mountain Green and just kind of how it's going right now, we've got a lot of work going on when you first come up the canyon on the right side of the road there. I know there's been some commercials that haven't done there. And then as you keep going, you've got where interchange is going to drop in, where we've got Trapper's Loop, we've got the bank, we've got Sinclair, we've got the townhomes, which are zoned, you know, for vacation rentals, which I understand with Snow Basin so close, that, working in Eden and Huntsville, I have a lot of experience with vacation rentals and what that type of zoning does to the community and where it pushes it. And so because of that, my concern would be pushing more growth further down the Old Highway before we have the two that we're already kind of working on, like, at least with like a solid plan of what's going to be there, how is it going to serve the community? How many people are we dealing with in those areas? I'm not necessarily against or for a zoning change, but I think when I look at where we are right now, we might be getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, because you really just want to, you can't stop growth. All you can do is just direct it the best way possible for your community. And I don't think, given the state of where we are right now, that we're in the best place to make that kind of decision, because we just have a lot of other things going up in the air. I'd like to see the progress of the current commercial projects before we jump onto a third one and just keep pushing down Old Highway.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else for public hearing?
My name is Brian, I live on Green, I'm sorry, Blue Jay Circle. And I've lived in Mountain Green for about 15 years now, and I've watched it grow, it's a great city. My biggest concern is how spread out our commercial is in Mountain Green. We have a new project going on the west end along Gold Highway. We have existing ones that are the, up by Rose Hill area, Halt, Mountain Brook Estates, right behind them is commercial. We've got a commercial building to the, I guess to the south of Old Mountain Green Church. And what I don't want to see happen to Mountain Green is all this spread of commercial property. The general plan was set up to try to bring that down and keep it that way. The, so the concern I have is adding more commercial area when we are already spread out. Morgan, Morgan City has a lot of commercial areas spread all over the place just because of changes over time. And we have the opportunity here to prevent that from happening, keep it localized. What happens in a long-term situation is when, when this commercial property goes old, then it becomes dilapidated and ugly, and people don't want to move into it. So you've got a spread out, so that already in Mountain Green, I don't think that we should be adding more, that we should be decreasing it. That's what I want to say, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anyone else for public hearing?
Yeah, Vance Bowman, I just looked up Blue Jay Circle. My concern is high density housing. We're out in the country, moved out here to get away from that stuff, I lived in it before, to get away. We've got some already being built, we've got a set of townhomes, so I'm not quite sure what the justification would be to have high density housing in the Town Center that's that far away from where the Town Center has originally been planned to be.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? One more time? Okay, no one else? Motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
You have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're out of public hearing for this item on our agenda. Any questions for staff, or could we jump right into discussion?
Do you want to give staff the time again?
Yeah, we can do that, we can have our discussion, and he can hear what we're saying and address it as well, but you're wel, you're welcome to come up now if you want, if there's anything that you want to address, or?
Yeah, I'd love to. Yeah, thanks again. Just to address a couple of the questions or comments that were made. You know, the, I think there was a comment that was made that this needs to be, that there needs to be conditions on this type of zone. The, the county has done a very, very good job of actually doing that.
If you can, if you can do this a really good favor to fight it, I know it's really hard, but we're, you got to talk to us at this point. If you don't mind, it gets, it gets really confusing and.
Sorry, I want to address then.
I know you do, it's, it's, it's almost a gut reaction, but.
Twenty-five pages of restrictions and requirements and guidelines of how this has to be designed. There's very, very specific architectural features, there's a very specific percentage of how much has to be commercial versus how much can be residential, how the streets have to lay out, the block lengths, the amount of parking, driveways landscaping. There's a big community trail that goes along the north side of this property. The county has done a very good job at, at laying out what the conditions and the requirements are for this zone. As far as the city center, I think everybody knows that, that UDOT has acquired property to take Trapper's Loop all the way down to A4 and make that connection right there. The main intersection, the center of Mountain Green is going to be right there on Trapper's Loop and Old Highway. When that's going to happen, that's up to UDOT, but that is where the city center is going to be, and this is in that area. I believe that is why staff selected this as, as future use for commercial. High density housing, there was a comment made about high density housing, there's very specific guidelines in Article A, which is the Town Center Design Standards, that specify, you know, what the requirements are. Again, it's those percentages of commercial versus residential. Hope I addressed everyone's questions, I wrote them down. This is, this is my job, I, I, I love what I do because I want my kids to live in an area that is well-designed, that's well-thought-out, that's planned. The worst thing I can do is design something that's going to look horrible in 20 years that my kids don't want to be a part of. So I kind of take that to me personally to make sure it's a good product, project. I'm going to work a lot with Josh, we've already discussed this a few times, and, and what could be there and how that would lay out, and the last thing I want is a, just slap something down there so it can be developed. And that's why I actually like, at first when I read these 25 pages, I thought, are you kidding me? But I actually appreciate it because it's very well-thought-out and here's how the county has wanted this area to be, so. With that, I'll, I'll stay up here if you have questions for me, if not, I'll, I'll go back there, but.
Any questions for the applicant? No? No, but thanks for coming up, I'm sure we'll have questions eventually here in a sec, but we'll have our, our discussion about this. Is the projector working? Is there any way you could put the future land use, or the?
Future land use map.
Yeah, the future land use map and the general plan. I'm specifically looking for, just to look at the, what the future land use map has and those definitions.
Well, it's not even so much definitions, it's what, it's zone commercial?
Well, there's, there's definitions for commercial and there's a definition for Town Center.
In the general plan.
In the general plan.
Right.
But the designation in the future land use map is commercial.
But, so in my mind, that wasn't part of the Town Center when we did it?
In my mind, it was not.
That's mine too.
In the, in, yeah, the year, two years it took us to write this.
Yes.
So that, that's what I want to say. So, so while he's, while he's bringing that up, since I'm from Mountain Green, I'll, I'll give you my, my concerns with this. So we spent a lot of time, someone from the, member of the public reminded us that the, this was not in the original general plan. We did a future land use map amendment with public hearing and lots of input to designate areas of what we defined in the future land use, in, in the general plan as Town Center. And then we put those broad strokes, as we know the general plan as the broad strokes, right, planner? Is that good? No, clarify, help, chime in at any time. What I'm trying to get to is that I understand that the general plan is, is broad in nature, it's, it's kind of an overarching planning document that gives us our guidelines, but we spent.
I can speak to the general plan.
Yeah, please.
The general plan is a guiding document, it's discretionary. It's supposed to provide kind of a framework and a guideline for future development, how the community wants to develop. It provides no entitlement, it provides only direction on how the community wants to grow. The zoning, on the other hand, is completely separate from the future land use. So the problem with, the problem here is you have a future land use map that also contains the name of a zoning district, and they're two totally separate things. You have future land use map, which has a Town Center, and that Town Center is defined in your general plan with a small paragraph. And then you have commercial, which is also defined in the general plan with a small paragraph, it gives general guidelines as to what the community will have to see there. However, in your zoning ordinance, you have a list of commercial use districts. One of those districts is the Town Center. So while they are requesting rezoning to the Town Center zoning district, that would be in line with the commercial recommendation because your, your general plan calls for this property, the property to be commercial, and the Town Center zoning district is a commercial zoning district. So that is why staff is recommending approval. It would give the county more design, I guess, leeway on this property because Town Center zoning requires a development agreement to go along with it, which would provide some sort of give and take between the developer and, and the county. The county can ask for additional things, and the developer could ask for additional things, and there's some leeway there with the development agreement that other zoning districts don't have that could go here.
Okay.
Did I ask you a question?
It did, thank you. I just wanted to, I wanted everybody to have a refresh, a restart of the intent and purpose of the general plan. So I'll give you, okay, my opinion, you guys can talk about, this is, this is what I'm thinking. So when we went through this, that, we had two very specific paragraphs that we wrote for Town Center. I know it's confusing, it was confusing for us because there is a zone called Town Center, and there is a definition in the, in the future land use map that, that talks about Town Center. And I know they're not the two, the same two things, but if we go back to the paragraph for commercial, it didn't have any housing in it. So we specifically looked at that old pit area as a commercial area with no housing, and that's what the definition in the, in the general plan says. However, the definition for Town Center does have housing. So it talks about, hey, let's, let's, let's have a mix of commercial in that. We specifically, when we, the intent of the general plan was to put commercial only here, no housing at all. Whatever the applicant does, if, whatever happens to the land, whatever those uses are five, 10 years from now, it's going to be based on whatever this gets rezoned as. So if it's a permitted use to have 70 or 80% of this to be multifamily homes, then that will be a permitted use if this, if this becomes, is rezoned as a Town Center zone. We specifically wanted it all commercial. So that, that's, that's where I'm at. Discussion.
Well, it, to me, I like what was said with some of them, that people are moving here to get away from the other side, and Town Center increases your density and we's keeping it into a certain area. So I'm in favor of leaving it commercial, like you said, and the more we expand, it's all you're doing is just increasing the density more and more, and I don't feel that the people. of Mountain Green really, we got a bunch going on there as it is right now that's already zoned for without adding to it.
More specifically, I think there are commercial zones that meet the intent of the paragraph under the title "commercial." There's, there are other commercial zones that don't have housing in it that, that met the intent of what we talked about.
Yeah, and that's what I'm getting at, is by doing the town center, like you said, we've just increased the density that much more in the Mountain Green area.
That is so.
Well, I, I kind of agree. I, I can remember the, the total discussion with that specific holly gravel pit, and we definitely wanted commercial there, and not...
More specifically, no housing.
No housing. If, I think if we'd wanted housing and commercial, we would have given it the town center designation of the future land use map. We didn't. Where it was located so close to the freeway and that, we felt it was better suited for commercial.
Non-housing.
Non-housing, commercial, yes.
You were here for it, too. Thoughts?
Yeah, there's a lot that we were digesting at that time, but, I mean, I, my recollection is the same as yours, is that this was not one of the areas that we were anticipating going, you know, multi, multi-use, it was strictly going to be commercial. And I don't, I don't think I've seen anything that's changed my mind on that.
Steve?
Yeah, I'm pretty much in agreement with you. I do have a question of, Josh, I remember, that's one of the disadvantages of being here as long as I have. I remember discussions when, I forget Grant's last name, Crowe, Grant Crowe, our planner. He came up one time and he says, with the future land use, or the map, he says, "This is your general plan. I just heard you say, 'No, that's not the general plan.'"
General plan.
Who's right, and why do we go with...
The future land use map is only one aspect of your general plan. Your general plan also contains other elements, including circulation, housing, it should include natural resources, and it should include a projection of total build-out. I mean, there's a lot of things that general plan shouldn't include that your general plan doesn't have, and that can be fixed with the next update. But the general plan is supposed to be a document that guides, not just a pretty map that shows where you want future growth. There should be goals, objectives, and action statements that should go along with it. And your current general plan does have goals and objectives. Your general plan's, I think, 46 pages long.
Shouldn't they reflect each other? I guess it's just a general question, shouldn't the written portion of the plan reflect what that shows?
Well, the, the written portion of the general plan should expand on that, so you're not just relying on the map.
True. And we do have those two, like I said, those two definitions, that, that was what I'm basing my thoughts, thoughts on now.
But there's nothing in your general plan that states that that commercial zone is only restricted to certain commercial zones, or that commercial designation.
Sure.
So, your zoning ordinance has all these commercial districts, and when you look at a commercial zone, a developer or a property owner's gonna see commercial on the future land use map, and they're gonna then go to the zoning ordinance and say, "Well, which district, zoning district is gonna best encompass what I wanna do with my property?" And if there's a commercial district there, then they're gonna assume that they can rezon their property because it'll be in line and perform us with what the future land use map shows.
So I'm reminding ourselves, we're a recommending body to the county council who makes a legislative decision?
I am not a decision maker either.
So can you, can you refresh, paint the picture for what a legislative decision is, compared to the CUP discussion we had?
All right, so legislative decision versus the CUP decision? A legislative decision is one where you have to provide findings of fact for either approving or denying. But those findings of fact are up to you to draft and, and state in your recommendation to the county commission. The county commission may take your recommendation and go the officer, or they may follow your recommendation and not staff. It's up to their discretion, but all of those decisions have to be followed up with findings of fact as to why you chose to approve or deny. Whereas a conditional use permit, if you check all the boxes in our code, you can't deny. So there's, there's that difference.
Thanks for that. Dustin, we haven't had an opportunity to give you a chance, so any input?
Oh, sure. I don't really have a whole lot to say. I mean, I wasn't part of that discussion, I came in at the very end of the design standards for town center. Looking at this future land use and trying to visualize what Mountain Green should look like from my point of view, I don't know, I, I hate to give away commercial when, when there's a need for commercial property. And with the high density of town center, it makes me concerned as well, maybe growing a little too fast than what we want at this point. Those are just some of the thoughts I'm trying to organize in my head, but...
Very good.
And then also maybe trying to figure out, maybe a, a buffer between some of the residential and the commercial there, too.
Okay. Any, any other thoughts on this? No? I'm not making a motion here, I just, we've all had discussion. I'm, I'll take any, any motion someone wants to entertain, and we'll run it through Robert Brewer. Would you like to give the applicant a chance to address anything we've been talking about? Yeah, go ahead.
I'll make a few comments.
Sure.
You know, I, I understand the full commercial, you know, how, you know, that area is designated for commercial. It's also mentioned that perhaps there's a buffer, and that's kind of how, how development works. You typically have commercial in the center, and as you go away from it, you then have your high density, and it decreases in density as you go out from that. And obviously, we, we haven't designed anything, we don't know exactly what the site plan is gonna lay out, we've done a couple of things preliminarily on how that would work, but it, I mean, that's, that's how that would work. You would, you would want your commercial on the south side that would give visibility along A4, and then if there is townhomes or whatever the residential is, that's small single-family lots or whatever it is, they would then be on the north side of that commercial, which would provide that buffer. That, that has been discussed between the, the sides of the residential units. And so, you know, if, if, if it's all straight commercial, you're gonna have commercial fairly close to the residential, to the, the larger single-family lots. But I think that, that flexibility, those design standards, give guidance to how you can provide those, those buffers between the commercial, higher density, and then down to the lower density.
Josh, could you just turn the light off a little bit?
I live here in Mountain Green, we got five rural boroughs, we live a mile and a half up the road from here.
Thanks.
My wife is super excited for the lease that's, that's going in hopefully soon, it's just to the north of this commercial, along with some of those retail paths that are going in there. And, and we feel that it, it fits fairly well, but my, my only drawback is if you just leave it commercial, the county doesn't have quite as much say on, on those design standards. They do a little bit, but town center, they have a lot more control and a lot more leeway of, of what things need to look like and how it needs to be laid out. And so I, to me, it, it makes sense, but obviously, you're, you're the ones that are gonna give a recommendation. I think if there is a spot for the town center, that's, it's a pretty, pretty good one, but...
It's bad verbiage, town center, we've wrestled with it for a long time, 'cause it implies it's the town center. It's a zone that allows for commercial and fam, multifamily dwellings. So, yeah. I, it, just for the public's, it, it's really hard to discuss all these things, especially in this, in this venue, but our, our goal in developing the general plan and the future land use map update for this was to centralize the density of housing to that corner of Trapper's and Old Highway there. Specifically because the Johnson Development was already approved to the north of that, which is what's being developed right now, so that we did have some kind of focal point for the town. So, saying the word town center just, it, it just kind of throws it off a little. What we're talking about is, is a mixed-use zone versus strictly a commercial zone, which we get are both commercial zones. My problem, my issue to try and overcome is that we wanted that to not have any residential in there specifically during the discussion, that's why we put those two, that's why we put those two paragraphs in there for commercial versus town center. Anything else that you guys want to ask or address? Thank you, appreciate it. Anybody wanna do a motion or have some more discussion?
Whatever, we need to make a finding.
What'd you mean, a finding?
Of why we're deciding...
A finding of, finding of fact, so...
Of what we're, why we're deciding.
I like what, not to put Dustin on the spot, but I, I do like the logic that he said, it's just not... Well, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, we can go back and listen to it again. Wanna take a stab at rehashing that?
Oh, I couldn't do that, I don't know.
You didn't remember what he said.
Maybe all I can remember, tell me.
Well, essentially, to the fact that, that we, we want to centralize the development, that the intent with the general plan discussions was to centralize the multifamily use, the high-density housing to the, to the corner of Trapper's Loop and Old Highway. And this pushes the possibility, I get that, no matter what they, until it's actually developed, whoever owns it at that time has the, if we were to recommend town center as a, as a zone, they would have the uses of whatever town center zone is, which is, help me if I'm wrong here, was it 20% or 25% or whatever?
No, it's like 30...
30, 30%.
So 30% commercial versus...
35%.
And then the rest is high density.
So we're talking, so we're talking, they would have the potential to develop 65% of that as housing.
Yeah.
High-density housing.
High-density housing. Regardless of what the intent now is, that's the possibility with the, with the town center zone, and that's, I think, inconsistent with the...
So I think it moves it beyond where we wanted the town center.
Yeah, it moves the housing beyond where we wanted the town center to be. That would be our finding of fact. And again, it's a recommendation.
Well, this is a plan that Mountain Green people were participants in developing, so it's not just our decision, it's the community.
Yep.
So I see the future land use, can I see the applicant's site plan?
It's not required for the rezoning.
Not required at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just a rezoning question.
I just was trying to visualize again where that property is on, in that area, but I couldn't remember.
That would be, if the rezoning were to be approved, that would be, the conceptual plan would be in, in...
It's kind of behind the fire...
Fire station.
Fire station towards the interstate.
Yeah, the, the conceptual plan would be added to the development agreement, which is required for the town center.
I think he's just asking where is it, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
So it's, it's, it's hard to visualize where it is in Mountain Green.
It's, it's this chunk here-ish, and then it comes around and...
Where does it start sloping down towards the highway? Does that whole thing slope down, or is that...
There's the big, well, the gravel, so this is high, and this is high, and the gravel pit's kind of in the middle, so that the high part is, is right here.
Show him where the rest area is.
The rest area is right here.
Okay.
That give you an idea about where it is?
The firehouse is right here, I believe. Right in here. There's the river that comes across, you have a little bridge, the firehouse is right there.
So it's kind of like just behind it.
Okay.
We, yeah, contrary to what...
I couldn't get my phone to load again, so I couldn't see it.
That, I remember as, as the discussion, we do need commercial, we need, we need commercial per tax base, and that's why we said, "This, this is the area we would like our commercial con, just commercial only concentrated." That's... Okay. I'm ready for a motion, if someone is. You guys both racing?
I don't have to pay for it to tell me the stakes.
Is Chris in?
We'll get there.
We'll get there.
Do you want that?
None. Are you gonna make it, Chris?
Yeah, well...
He's gonna make it.
Something like that.
The wording in the general plan says the intent of the commercial use category is to provide for commercial uses. And I understand town center zone is in the commercial table, but I feel it...
Okay.
With, with commercial uses.
Adds too much high-density housing, yeah.
What other commercial use zones do we have?
Lots of them.
Yeah, there are a lot. There's a, any, I, I wish we could have a great conversation with, especially the people that's in Mountain, Mountain Green, but...
Commercial buffer, neighborhood commercial.
That stuff's up to the south of Old Highway.
Business park.
That's being developed.
Manufacturing.
It's not just commercial, there's specific uses for each one. Like, one was commercial buffer, one was commercial highway, the western...
Business park.
Yeah.
Light manufacturing, industrial.
They talked about it in your general plan?
No, no, it was, what, what zones?
Yeah, I don't remember reading that.
Commercial, commercial buffer.
Commercial buffer.
Neighborhood commercial, town center, commercial shopping, commercial highway, general commercial, business park, manufacturing, commercial...
Industrial.
Yeah, light manufacturing, yeah, and industrial, and TPC.
So what we're saying is, we are, we think that there are zones that are commercial...
Technical professional campus district.
Technical professional campus, was it, was it by Browning? Yeah. Okay. Okay, we're ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move forward a negative recommendation to the county commission for, is it the Eldridge rezon map? I'm sorry, for the MND Nelson Rezon Map Amendment, application number 22 decimal 065, changing 44.75 acres from A22, town center based on the findings listed in the staff report dated December 8, 2022, due to the following findings...
We don't wanna use his findings.
No, yeah, so strike based on the findings listed in the staff report.
Okay, uh, due to, due to, number one, does not conform to the county's goal to centralize high-density housing towards Trapper's Loop, and number two, does not conform to the county's goal in accordance with the general plan of encouraging commercial development in this area.
Okay, do you have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor with a motion?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Onto item number six on our agenda. Work session. Okay. Anything for us?
I don't have anything.
Anything for staff?
I got one question.
Very good.
With the Milton area plan, and that, you mentioned to him not to do a survey. Question is why?
I said, "Staff is not willing to do the survey, send it out, and then evaluate the results."
So far as them doing it, it's okay, it was more than staff.
If your, if your committee wants to put together a survey, pay for the stamps and the envelopes, hit the addresses and send it out, that's completely up to your committee.
Okay, that's...
I don't have the budget for that.
I don't have the budget for that, so.
Well, and I get, you know, you'd not have to send a survey, that's, so he just was curious about what was meant, and so I just get a little clarification.
I would like to see the questions that you plan to send out.
Okay.
Because statistically, the way you word a question can bias one way or the other. So I, and whether you phrase it yes or no versus open-ended will also affect what answers you get.
So what would you suggest is the best type of question? Open-ended or yes or no?
I would recommend open-ended, because then you're gonna get an honest answer. If you just say, should there be any development in Milton? Yes or no?
Yeah, so just put something there with like a line where they can put what they mean in?
Uh, yeah, I wouldn't make them yes or no.
Okay, that's good, good information, too. Okay, awesome, that's the only thing I have.
Mr. Chairman, is it proper to bring up questions? I have questions on.
Yeah, this is our time.
All right, um, in, in conversations with people I've had about coming up projects, particularly in Porterville, where they talk about doing bed and breakfasts, or whatever the term is. In discussions with people, they're saying that they can, in essence, if they use a definition of the word, they could put in whatever amount of units they want.
Folks, I apologize, I'm just having trouble here, and I, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Are you talking about bed and breakfast or Airbnb?
Both. I'm just saying back under, it was brought to my attention under our definition of agribusiness, people could put in zone styles. That's a question to the staff, or a question to you guys as much as anything. We don't call it a motel, we just call it whatever they wanna call it, under our definitions, and they can put those in. Does that sound right to you guys? Does that sound wrong to you guys? Have you looked at it? Are you willing to look at it?
Yeah, I definitely am willing to look at it.
So, in the.
I was gonna say, bed and breakfast is a conditional use in A20 and RR1.
C1.
C1, yep.
So they could go in and.
That's, and, and talk to Josh and.
So that's A20 zone, right?
A, or, or RR1, RR5.
There was an all-zone?
Can, 20, everything except F1.
But, uh.
In those bigger zones.
Where's the line between that and a B and B, or an Airbnb?
Airbnb is more short-term. It'd be short-term, less than 30 days, and it's usually typically a single-family that goes to the property, rents it from you, whether it's a loft area or whatnot. A bed and breakfast is typically, there's multiple rooms for multiple couples, they go there, they serve breakfast, there's activities or whatnot, that's typically how I've seen it.
But, but you could, I, I think the confusing thing was, you could, you could really operate an Airbnb as a bed and breakfast. Because you could, under the Airbnb website, you could have like a bedroom in your house as an Airbnb.
So let's talk.
Thanks, guys.
So if, if it's proper for me to do, Dan, or if you're sorry?
No, I just couldn't.
If I, if I understand it correctly, we're saying, for example, and I hope this is proper, to talk about Slicktees, they wanna expand their operations, under what definition, B and B?
Airbnb, yeah.
So, my question back to the Plan Commission is if they wanna go in and install X amount of units, whether they might be, yeah? That's permitted in our definitions, as I understand it.
Well, if they don't exist, they'd have to get a building permit first, right?
The Slicktees already have their dude ranch, which has the residential units for families to come and experience the dude ranch.
Right.
What they're also looking to do, and this is something we can't regulate, is the Airbnb aspects. Our code has a short-term rental, they would have to comply with that, does not require a conditional use permit. It would not fall under our bed and breakfast definition, it would fall under the short-term rental. And as long as they can comply with their short-term rental, it, they come in, they fill out, they answer the question there, and it doesn't go to any hearing body. The bed and breakfast would have to be submitted as a conditional use permit, they would have to comply with the conditional use permit section. And if it's a C1, I would make the determination whether to approve or not. If it's controversial, then I could forward it to you.
I think what he's asking though is, let's say they want to do an expansion, say.
Which is what they're asking for.
Right, yeah, I wanna put like two cabins and a yurt on my land right now, so that I can actually come in and do a business application with you.
Well, that would, that would be up to you, because they already have the structures for the dude ranch.
Well, he's not asking about the Slicktees in particular, he's just talking a general question people are asking.
Well, if somebody wanted, wanted to come in and put a yurt or a detached structure to be used, I would say no.
They have to be the recreational resort.
Well, not only a recreational resort, but the Utah State Legislature adopted laws that allowed for an internal accessory dwelling unit. So you could rent out a room in, in your house, we can't regulate that, we can't, we can't say no to that. But the moment you detach it right now, our code doesn't allow anything to detach. So if you wanted to put a yurt or a cabin or something else on your property to rent out, the answer to that is no. Because our code doesn't allow it.
Under what, I guess that's my question back to Josh is, under what definition can we, can they build structures that?
A resort, we have a resort conditional use permit, which.
There's a resort conditional use permit, they could do it that way, or they could just come and apply for a bed and breakfast. So they have a vacant piece of property, they wanna build a bed and breakfast on that property, they come in, they apply for a conditional use permit, which is a C1, which means I would review it and either make the determination, or if I felt it was too controversial, I'd forward it to the County Commission. At that point, they could build a bed and breakfast with however many rooms, serve breakfast, have families come up there, park their cars, enjoy a night, a week, or whatever, and then.
Which I'm not necessarily opposed to, I'm, I'm suggesting or asking back, under our definitions, if the Slicktees wanna increase their operations, can they, they'd have to apply underneath, you're saying a resort special district?
No, not resort special district, resort, with, they, they, they already are applying for the resort conditional use permit of.
The private resort.
Private resort.
That's what they're, yeah, that is what they're applying for.
But that does not cover the bed and breakfast, right?
That's a separate.
Well, they're not asking for a bed and breakfast, so the Airbnb is completely separate, because that's allowed outright already.
Okay, but what I guess I'm saying back to you is they're looking to increase their operations, they're looking to increase what they're doing. To me, it seems natural that they would want to increase the units that are available for people. So, and that's why I'm asking, under what scenario could they do that?
They'd have to come back with another conditional use permit, because that's not what they're requesting.
But if they did, under our conditional use permits, how would that?
I would say that they would have to expand the existing conditional use permit, which would be a C2, under the private resort, which would come back to you. For the Slicktees. That would have to come back to you.
Or anyone in the whole county, the same.
Not necessarily, because other people in the county who wanted bed and breakfast, that's a C1, so it wouldn't necessarily come depending where it is, the type of response we get from the residents and the neighbors, because of that.
But if it was just an Airbnb, they would, that's not even conditional use.
Airbnb, if somebody has an extra room in their basement that they wanna rent out, they can do that. And in fact, we cannot legally even go look to see if they've listed that on the Airbnb website, or VRBO, or whatever, we can't legally look. The only way we can actually get them to come in and register is if we hear about it from a complaint, or if they come in and talk to us about it. Then we can say, you need to fill out a short-term rental, you need to follow the guidelines of the internal accessory dwelling unit. But it's not, it never comes to you, because it's allowed outright by state statute, the state statute supersedes our code.
Okay, well, that was the danger I saw, I don't know if you guys see that or not, but I, if it's to be applied under another CUP, I suppose there's not much danger of it, I just makes me wonder when people go up on their ground, start putting up domicile on them, how they define what it is.
Like cabins and stuff, yeah.
Well, hopefully they're applying for building permits, otherwise.
Unless they're sheds, of 200 square feet.
Right, right.
Probably qualify or something, right?
They would, that's upsetting.
Yeah, if you apply for a shed that's, that's 200 square feet or less, you don't necessarily need a permit unless you put electricity in it, then you always need a permit. And there is some other building permit restrictions on height, and if it's totally enclosed.
And I think if it's gonna be occupied by individuals, yeah.
It can't be occupied by individuals. Anytime it's to be occupied or is habitable space, it always requires a, a permit. And if there's already an existing house, then it can't be detached based on our current code.
Correct, thank you.
Not all states and counties are the same, but.
Yeah, no.
Like California does, except Idaho as well, detached accessory dwelling units are different.
At the last County Commission meeting, the County Commission asked me to start writing a code amendment that would allow for detachment.
There's a big need, there's a need for it.
I haven't written it yet.
Yeah.
I got one more thing, just come up in my mind, and that's to do with the conditional use permit that we went through tonight with gravel pits.
You mean the land excavation?
Yeah, but, but what my thing is, is we dealt with that one, I had no clue about the upper one, that was news to me tonight.
Yeah.
Well, there's a couple issues there. One, if it predates our code, then it's, I believe it's grandfathered in, they have.
But this, but here's the issue with it, is they probably didn't have the ground back at that time. So, I'm not sure if it would predate. My, my concern, I think, you know, courtesy to some who were here, that that's something that needs to be explored to make sure that, because if, I mean, we issued a conditional use permit for that one pit here, for three trucks per hour, if they're gonna use that other pit, now you've increased the traffic on that road also.
Typically, for code enforcement, we operate on complaint basis only.
Well, but I think you had a complaint, do they need to come in and file it with you?
They need to come in and fill out, fill it out. They can fill it out anonymously, but I, I need the report.
Okay. That's just, I just think that that's something that was mentioned tonight, and I didn't know anything about that one, so.
Yeah, I can keep their name out of it, they can fill it out anonymously, but they kinda need to fill out the form.
Okay, so you need anonymous form from the residents, and then you can look into it.
Well, I just don't have the staff to actively be out there looking, I really don't.
Well, but see, that's, there comes my issue with Morgan, right there, is we keep doing stuff, but there's no enforcement, so do what you want.
Well, the enforcement comes down to complaints, if I receive complaints, then, then I'm obligated to, to look into it.
Right.
But if I don't receive a complaint, and I go after somebody, then they could call discrimination, because I'm, I'm targeting them. So if, if we operate on complaint basis only, and then I start targeting certain people without a valid complaint, then, then the county runs the risk of lawsuit, and I'd rather not be in the end.
I, I have one more quick question, I know we're late, so I'll just ask for a quick definition. Under our agribusiness, when somebody wants to set up a store, what are the rules that govern what they can sell? There are rules that say, like, you can sell what you produce, or can they buy additional things and put them for sale?
Our code does not stipulate any of that.
So they can put a store up there, or whatever they want?
If, if, I would say if they're selling stuff that they grow, such as, you know, chickens, or their beef, or, or whatever, but they also sell shirts, that probably would still comply with our definition of agribusiness.
And I don't have a problem with that either, I'm just saying if they wanna expand it, where they, what are the rules that govern that? Well, we'd like to set up a convenience store here where they can buy sodas and.
The rules would be governed by their conditional use permit, which would be private resort, which does allow for commercial services. And it would also be regulated by our definition of agribusiness, that's all we have.
So that's what I'm asking, and our definition of agribusiness would allow them to import whatever they want and sell.
Not necessarily import, it's just, it's just open. It doesn't.
Well, they can't sell something they don't either produce or bring in from, on a truck.
So there's two paragraphs for agribusiness. The first is, any individual partnership, corporation, or organization primarily supplying services and goods, such as equipment, feeds, or supplies. None of that says that it has to be produced on-site, so they can truck that in. Such as equipment, feeds, or supplies to producers, or marketable agricultural products, including nurseries, farm cooperatives, and the like. So a farm cooperative, if they've got neighbors that wanna also sell stuff, then they could, they could have that there as well. This includes activities that involve processing and packaging of farm goods, this also includes uses that involve activities, processes, and/or buildings that are subject to taxation and/or state regulation. The next paragraph actually opens it up, it says, the intent of the agribusiness definition is not to limit agricultural uses or activities in the county, rather serves to offer alternative ways to allow agriculture-related uses and activities in a manner that promotes agriculture in the, in the county. Agribusiness use designations are to be used to help enhance agricultural activities in the county, and as such, may act as a buffer between agricultural activities and other land use designations. It's really just open.
So under that definition, someone could go up and set up a, like a mini mart or something?
I don't know about a mini mart, but a farm cooperative, where they sell different things, where they produce it, whether it's honey, or other farm products, they could.
It says primarily, too, so it, it says it's not excluded as long as it doesn't become your primary business, I get it, I mean, because in the.
It says primarily, yeah.
Yeah, so if you wanna start selling t-shirts and stuff like that, as long as you're primarily selling agriculture.
Or selling beef.
What does primarily mean?
Well, it all goes back to definition, in my opinion, that's why I'm asking you guys.
You were right on the last one, that's for sure. You called out, what was the definition you called out? Completely different from what I had expected. I forget what it was in the last meeting, so it's good to ask the definitions, because the words matter.
Are you talking about the Stucko discussion?
Yeah, the Stucko, thanks, yeah, completely.
It makes it sound like I'm against Stucko, and I'm not.
No, no, but you're, it was, it's a valid point to ask, what is, what does primarily mean? Because it means something.
I guess that's what I'm saying back, it comes down to who's defining it, right?
Yeah.
This is my definition of what is allowable. If we don't have it written down in black and white, what is and what is not, then it's open to, to push.
Did you, does that answer your questions, you think?
Yeah.
That's okay, I was just on my shrink.
Our code does allow the Planning Commission to recommend to staff, or direct staff, to like text amendments to change the code, so, I mean, if you wanna think about it.
After you do the ADU?
Direct staff, I got, I have, oh, I think I have seven text amendments I'm supposed to be writing.
Any other questions for staff? Did you get, new changes put on the meeting minutes from last time?
The only thing that I didn't get to before is, put Chairman Ross instead of Member Ross on, and that's the only.
Yeah, I almost got that one, too, sorry.
Yeah.
Almost. Do I need to sign, do I need to sign those minutes? Do you have them printed?
Yeah.
From last time? Okay, I'll sign them before I leave.
Yeah.
Any other input that, on the minutes from last time? If not, we'll take emotional approval.
So moved.
Second. If others in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
I'm with you, there's a lot of really nebulous, not.